All right, I call the January nineteenth meeting of the City Council Finance Committee to order. I would entertain a motion on the claims.
Your Honor, we make a motion to pay amount of claims, amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and two dollars and eighty-nine cents in checks written for payroll slash liabilities on December twenty-sixth through January ninth in the amount of three hundred and two thousand three hundred and fifty-five thousand thirty-two cents. Manual checks in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and five dollars and thirty-six cents, and the Elaine credit card in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents. That total is six hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
And I'll second the motion. Any questions on the bills today?
The only one I had, Steve already answered, was looking at the fifty-nine thousand that we were charged for December's garbage pull.
You guys love that bill, don't you?
Well, it's, 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 you know, we realize that we're paying that out of city coffers, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents, plus we're being taxed, property tax for that one. So each one of us, whether we're living in a or not, paying an additional. So I always look at that as a little high, and gonna try and do something about it. That's why I'm keeping track of it.
You're gonna use your rollout and you have less, generate less trash and...
No, next time I'm gonna, gonna, if I'm still young enough, I'm gonna run for county commissioner and poke holes at them.
Oh, good.
Fifty-nine thousand, when other people of similar sizes are paying less, is a little, we're getting, I don't care where they're hauling the garbage and what the general plan is and how we're saving landfill space, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The amount is too much.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, you're quite welcome. And I, the only one, the Western Law Associates, is, is that related to the EPA lawsuit?
Is that one over?
No, it's, I don't think it's over. It's just the, it was like nearly three thousand dollars.
Yes, Your Honor, that's, they recently put their submittal into the appeal process, and so that most of that bill is related to the EPA.
Okay.
We're still working on trying to get that reimbursed. He's got to give me a detailed analysis of that, and then I'm sending a letter to the county commissioners, because they have to apply for that money through the state to get reimbursed for that.
Okay. All right, I guess if there's no other questions...
One last question. Archer Construction on, on North Federal water line repair. Do we have any more suspects?
Your Honor, any more breaks in, in line or bills coming in regarding that?
Both.
That line item, we hired Archer to construction to help us when we had three breaks at the exact same time. Our crews were able to fix two of the breaks, but in order to get water back in a timely fashion, we hired Archer to help us on that. It's an interesting prospect of trying to objectively select a firm. We basically called out and had the different construction companies in town come to the site and give us a bid and also a timeframe on how soon they could get there, and Archer was the cheapest and also the most available. So it's an isolated incident that helped us repair one of those breaks in a timely fashion.
Do we, do we feel that we're over those, or we're gonna have some more winter breaks, or do we don't have a feeling for that?
It's always tough to say. I wish I could see underground and I don't know what's happening. We've had a bit of trouble on, you'll forgive me, the street's escaping my, my memory right now, but for about a month, we've, we've struggled with a break, kind of just barely west of Federal, near Webbwood Road in that area. Again, just 'cause I'm on the spot, the street's kind of north you, that area. We've struggled with that area with different pressures and with different breaks. Hard to say. I imagine we'll have more breaks before the thaw happens, but I do our best and keep on them.
Okay. Are there, I know we were doing the, we had, we had the company come in and listen for leaks or whatever. Is that still happening? Was that done?
Your Honor, the leak detection survey has been completed. We have a report from them. Some of the areas that they were able to highlight, we already knew were problem areas, but the nice thing with their equipment, they were able to hone it down to more specific locations.
Okay.
So we're gonna use that leak detection survey as we plan our budget for next year and some of the capital projects and improvements we want to...
All right, anything else? Right, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I guess motion carries. Any further business for us today, Stephen?
No, Your Honor.
All right, guest meeting adjourned.
Now call the January twentieth, two thousand fifteen regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. We'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Bailey, and after that, I'll offer an invocation if you'd remain standing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we ask for thy care and guidance as we meet this evening, that we might be able to treat each other with kindness and, and respect, that we'll be able to remember the needs of the people of the city of Riverton and, and the things that we have been asked to do as members of the Riverton City Council. And pray for thy guidance and direction, and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Would the, would the acting city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey?
Here.
Councilman Martin Cannon?
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian?
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez?
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson?
Here.
And Mayor Lars Baker?
Here. I declare that we have a quorum present, and the next item would be to approve the agenda. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as it was sent out.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Please speak into the microphone so those who are watching on television can hear you and the tape recorder can pick you up as well. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Mr. Dr. Docum, and I think it's probably more interesting to stop standing here than maybe to be with you. And we're going to talk about finding people, people being left behind, and that.
Or for some of us who do a lot of walking to place it on the, on the, on the doors of, of people that don't clean their walks. Because, you know, it's, what's, hey, it's true. And, um, let me see, what was the other thing? That, and the other thought I had in mind, I heard that it was explained to that the ordinance is very vague. And on cleaning sidewalks, maybe it might be when your first, you folks now, responsibility to revisit some of these ordinances again, like you did last year. And maybe we could add, at a time, you know, some time element on the ordinance, like thirty-six to forty-eight hours. You know, like Friday night it snows, we all day Sabbath, all day Sunday, Sunday evening, that's thirty-six hours. Monday morning is, is two days. And it should be adequate, you know, to get our sidewalks cleaned. And, but anyway, that's a thought to pass along and, and maybe start working on something like that. I think I covered everything. It, I wrote down and everything and all that. And I know there's a, the city parks, people, they do quite well. But I know last week I was able to catch one of the guys. And they, they cleaned their walk, yes. But then when they plowed off, it plowed off right on the curb there. And the crosswalks, they, they forgot to clean that out. And I went up there a couple of times with my own shovel and cleaned the, the crosswalk dips out so we wouldn't have to, wouldn't have to stumble through that. But I think he got the message and, and they'll, they'll take care of that. And so, anyway, I think that's all I, I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dockham, for coming and for your, for your comments. And we'll, we'll spend some time working on that. Is there anybody else that would like to address us now? The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would the acting city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, January sixth, two thousand fifteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, council work session. Approval of the minutes, January nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations, January twentieth, two thousand fifteen. Approval of the municipal court report for the month of December, two thousand fourteen. Approval of discharged fines for decreased deceased defendants for January two thousand fifteen. Catering permit applications. City Clerk's office has received four catering permits. Applications from the R bar for painting parties, which will run from five PM to ten PM on four separate occasions. The first one is January twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. Next is February twelfth, two thousand fifteen. February fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. And February twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you. Are there any other items that require further discussion? Finance report? Finance committee?
Sorry, yes. Sorry, I'm trying to find where it is. It's the recommendation of the finance committee for claims to be paid in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for December twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, and January ninth, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of three-hundred-and-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Manual checks in the amount of six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-five dollars and thirty-six cents. Loan credit card in the amount of nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents. For a total of six-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been motion, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions?
Your Honor, I would be abstaining from approving of the bills regarding Bailey Enterprises and Wix, the finance committee report.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It passes. Riverton Police Department Citizens Awards, Chief of Police has a report.
Thank you, Your Honor. From time to time, we like to recognize citizens in our community that have just gone above and beyond, done something extraordinary, or, you know, perhaps helped the police department some specific way. But sometimes, like Mr. Zertucci, I'd like to introduce you to Arnold Foul Zertucci, Senior. He's a member of our community, owns the Jack Pine Motel. And while his actions didn't help the police department per se, it was because of, of our positions in the community that we ran across some really great work that he was doing. I just want to make everybody aware of it and, and recognize him for his efforts. Mrs. Zertucci had a, a tenant in his motel who had a really bad debilitating disease. And this individual's family couldn't be contacted. And as his disease continued to erode his quality of life, Mrs. Zertucci stepped up and, and began caring for this individual. And was running errands for him, getting groceries for him, taking him to doctor's appointments, doing all the things that, you know, we would hope that our family would do for us if, if we were in a similar position. This went on for eight months. And it was only when he had to call EMS to come help this individual, because he just had become so debilitated, he couldn't, he couldn't function, that we stumbled across it and found out what was going on. And we just want to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Zertucci. We have a, just a certificate of appreciation, which is a very small token, just to say thank you. But really, it's about trying to recognize him publicly and, and thank him for, you know, really stepping up and helping out our community. I think that there's things like this happening in our community all the time. We just don't find out about it. And when we do find out about it, I think it's, it's our duty to say thank you and say how much we appreciate that, so.
That's remarkable, a remarkable example of, of human kindness and sacrifice. The next item on the agenda is a quarterly report from the Volunteers of America. Shelley?
Is it okay to approach?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Shelley Imbanu. I am the Program Director for the Volunteers of America Center of Hope here in Riverton. And it is our intent just to let you know how we're doing as of the second quarter. We appreciate your support of our program. V O A N R brings approximately forty years of experience in substance abuse treatment, a three-year CARF accreditation required by the Wyoming Department of Health for funding and administrative support. There continues to be many significant modifications and improvements in the time we have been here. These improvements include the following. The Center of Hope held the first annual Empty Bowl fundraising event through cooperation with local organizations and businesses. The Center of Hope fundraiser was, fundraiser was a success in the community and was well-supported. And that was held in October. The Center of Hope performed its yearly internal audit. These audits are done to minimize risk, which includes Volunteers of America Northern Rockies Board members, administration, and center staff. That was held in November. Volunteers of America Northern Rockies remodeled both the men's and women's social detox areas to incorporate beds for transitional services. Bow rise walls were constructed to separate and invite incentive for clients to move through the treatment process into the transitional model. Volunteers of America Northern Rockies worked in collaboration with other local or agencies to provide a Thanksgiving meal in the park to help raise awareness to addictions and homelessness. Hats, gloves, and clothing were made available to those in need. And the support around the community was phenomenal from everybody. The Center of Hope and, had a CARF survey. A three-year accreditation was received from CARF for assistance and referral detoxification, outpatient treatment, and residential treatment. The Center of Hope Program Director and Clinician have moved into an office suite that provides additional office space, a conference room, and group room. This space allows for groups and individual, individual sessions to be held while promoting a positive flow of services for our clients. The program structure continues with a true social detoxification model, which means we have eleven social detoxification beds, which are funded by the Wyoming Department of Health, seven close observation mats, which are paid for by the city and the county funding. And most recently, we have added six transitional beds, which is also funded by the Wyoming Department of Health as of October first, two thousand fourteen. Center of Hope has seen the success with the social detox model and most recently added transitional component. Two of these successes include clients who have been involved in more than three-hundred-and-eighty-three and seven-hundred-and-eighty-five admits into the facility. Both of these clients are still receiving treatment services today and working with the center service coordinator on employment and housing options. Other transitional clients have returned from treatment for support, secured employment, and attended, attended both residential and intensive outpatient treatment while working closely with the center staff, clinician, and service coordinator. On the second page, you'll see just some statistics. For the second quarter, we've had four-hundred-and-twenty-seven intakes, which brings our year-to-date eight-hundred-and-eighty-two. Unique individuals, second quarter was sixty-two, which brings it year-to-date one-hundred-and-sixty-five. First-time admissions, first-time admissions was twenty-six, bringing the year-to-date total of fifty-nine. You might look at that and kind of wonder what, what's the difference between unique and first-time admissions? Unique individuals are people who have visited us from July one of this year. First-time admissions are people who have came there for the very first time. Close observation days, six-hundred-and-eighty-four, bringing our year-to-date total to one-thousand-three-hundred-and-nine. Social detoxification days, three-hundred-and-ninety-one, bringing our year-to-date total one-thousand-thirty-eight. And transitional days, three-hundred-and-sixteen. Some of our successes that we have had, we have sent four clients for residential treatment, and all four of those clients were transported by Volunteers of America staff, which brings our year-to-date total seven for residential treatment. Outpatient treatment, five, brings the year-to-date total to six. And we have referred six clients to the PATH grant with Volunteers of America, bringing our year-to-date total to twenty-nine.
Thank you, Shelley. Does anybody have any questions?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I'm not really a question, but I'd just like to say that I have personally seen a huge effect on our community, thanks to the hard work you guys are doing, and sincerely appreciate it, and just hope you can keep it up.
I appreciate you saying that. You know, it's in large due to cooperation with the Riverton Police Department and the help of all of you and the city council. And also this wonderful staff that I've brought with me, our service coordinator, Paul Schenkel. My clinician is Ron DeShi. Ron Blumanstein is a Volunteers of America Northern Rockies Board Member. And Barb Eadie is our PATH grant coordinator. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, all, all of you for coming. Okay. I, I had the opportunity to serve on the, you know, on the, on the Crisis Center Board and, and then continue to attend meetings after the Volunteers of America had taken over. And I was, I'm impressed with the work that they've been able to do and the, and the things that have taken place since Volunteers of America has, has come on board. Appreciate that. Thank you for, for coming and giving us that report. The next item on the business is a public hearing in consideration of new daycare. Lindsay Thornock, two-thirty-five Cascade Drive, doing business as Carrying Hands Child Care. Could we get the Community Development Director's report?
Yes, Your Honor. In accordance with our Riverton Municipal Code, we have, we have received a completed application with the fee paid. We did put a notice in the paper for a public hearing. Property owners within a hundred and forty feet of the property were notified. We did get verification of an application with the state of Wyoming, and the facility was inspected for code compliance, and that passed. This application is for a family childcare home with no more than ten children, including the applicant's children. There were fifteen notifications that were delivered to surrounding property owners regarding this daycare facility located at two-thirty-five Cascade Drive. All of the property owners except one signed their approval for this daycare. This property is located in a residential district, and per the Riverton Municipal Code, childcare facilities are limited to a family childcare home with ten children duly licensed in this zone. There are some alternatives that council can utilize. When we, with, with some further review, we did notice a little discrepancy in the, in the definition, in the definition of a family childcare home in residential A. And what that's, and what that states is, family childcare home means a childcare facility in which care is provided for three to ten unrelated children from more than one immediate family for part of a day in the home of the provider. We did find out that this is not their permanent place of residence. They do utilize this house on occasion to stay, but it isn't their permanent residence. So we felt that this was something that the council needed to decide if they, their definition of this daycare, if it was, if it followed enough of the, of the municipal code to be allowed to be in this home. They do spend some time in this home, but it's not their permanent residence. And I think that's all. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for a public hearing.
Your Honor, I would move to open the public hearing regarding the new daycare for Lindsay Thornock, Carrying Hands Child Care.
It has been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
Good evening, Council. I am Crystal Myers, and I'm the business side of the daycare. Lindsay Thornock, my sister's the director, she has the hard job, she deals with all the kids. So we are here tonight to address some of the concerns that may come up with the city council. And so the first is what Sandy had addressed, and I wanted to kind of bring up some numbers. We sat down and figured out the amount of time we are in the residence. It is a home that was owned by our family since nineteen-seventy-four, so it's, it's been in the family for a long time, and we still use it today. We figure we're in the home during the day over fifty percent of the time, and the week is thirty-four percent of the time. So we're in the home a substantial amount of time, but we also have other residences outside of the city limits. We have some other concerns and issues that may come up that we wanted to address for you guys this evening, and I'm going to let Lindsay do that.
Good evening. My name's Lindsay Thornock. A few of the issues that we might have had addressed to us from the residents around the area is the parking issue. And we have a two-car garage that Crystal and myself will park in, so that allows two parking spots in our driveway, along with two street parking spots. We will also have staggered, staggered drop-off time and pickup time, so we will never have a large amount, number of people there. The children's safety is our biggest priority, and it is written in our policy that the children must be accompanied by an adult when being dropped off and picked up. Another concern that has been addressed is the property value of the homes. Well, childcare facility, we are inspected four times a year, and that's through the state and also the city. So we are kept to higher standards of the way we keep our house, as far as broken things around and property. So we are kept to higher standards to keep up the home value. And because of, we own the property, we have a large attachment to the area, because we grew up around here. And because of that, we are more apt to keep the property up as if it was a renter or the lot was vacant. With as much time as we spend in the home, we will be able to keep a better eye on the There's also a huge need for childcare in Riverton, Wyoming, and there are nowhere near enough certified facilities to accommodate the working families in the area. In closing, we feel that we will have very little impact on our neighbors or the neighborhood around us.
Does anybody have any questions for us at this time?
Go ahead.
Other than, since you both have other residences, other than spending the time there for the, for the daycare, what, what else do you spend time in the home for?
We kind of use it as a family spot. I live on one side of the county, and, well, between Lander and Riverton, Lindsay lives out towards more, towards Midvale. So we have a lot of family meals there. Our, Lindsay's husband stays there if he has to work late. My husband, who has secondary employment with the C W C, he comes in there and stays there in between shifts, because he does the night shift at C W C. So we use the home quite a bit.
Your Honor? Go ahead.
In one of the concerns that was brought up, they, they mentioned that it's a blind corner coming in there and that they had concern for the safety of the kids. I'm assuming that during the day they're kept in a fenced area or...
Right. We have to have a four-foot fenced area where they will have their free outside time play, and that is in the backside of the house, so it won't be on the corner. And also, I don't know when exactly, but there was a daycare directly across from where the house is at one point, and there was never an issue.
Thank you.
And we have it, also have it in our policies, that the children must be accompanied by an adult to and from the facility. And by DFS standards, we're not allowed to leave the children alone outside.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Lee.
How long do you spend each day in the, would you plan on spending each day in the home? I know your, your hours are what, eight to five?
Well, we have, six-thirty is when we'll take our first person. And that's just kind of, because they, they start work at seven. So six-thirty to five, five-thirty.
And will you be there longer after you close up, just to clean up or whatever?
Yes, yes. We'll probably, most likely be there till seven.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this issue?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Mayor votes aye. I declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the childcare permit.
Your Honor, make motion that we approve the special use permit for childcare facilities at...
Two-thirty.
Three-twenty-five Cascade Street in Riverton?
Two-thirty-five.
I'll second.
That was you? Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Sir, ma'am, what is the specific wording in the ordinance? Does it say that it has to be a permanent residence?
The ordinance does not say that at all. The ordinance just says, family childcare home limited to ten children duly licensed. Then, under the definitions of the family childcare home, it's, just says, family childcare home means a family childcare facility in which care is provided for ten, for three to ten unrelated children from more than one immediate family for part of a day in the home of the provider.
The Honesty, sir, I guess that's my heartburn, is when it says the home of the provider. To me, that sounds like a residence, and that's, that's not what this is.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Who defines, whose definition is that? Is that the city's definition, or is that the state's definition, or...
Your Honor, that's in our Riverton Municipal Code, and it's however you want to interpret it.
The city's own definition. So I guess, I guess to me, you know, it's, it doesn't say permanent residence, it says their home. Obviously, it's their home, or they wouldn't be, you know, able to spend the night there and do the, do the things. It's, it's their home. You know, they may not be their permanent residence. So I guess I have a lot less heartburn. And having very young children like I do, I understand the deep need this town has for quality childcare, so I am definitely in support of this. Thank you.
Your Honor? Go ahead.
That, that, the definition to me is very vague, and I, and I'm into the idea that it's, if it's owned by the people that have it, it doesn't say anything to have to live there. I don't see where that would be a problem.
Say primary residence.
I would reflect Jonathan's opinions also. Childcare is severely needed in Riverton. We see it on a regular basis that people just have a real hard time finding childcare. And with all of the neighbors being notified and getting no negative comments back, I think, again, interpreting a home, I think a person can have more than one home. So I'm in support of this.
Ms. Lowers, would you address the issue of home occupation permits? Since we're, we talked in our work session about trying to align daycare with home occupation permits.
Specifically, like whether they have to own the home or... With the home occupation, we have given home occupations to people that are renting a home. We have required that they get permission, or that we see permission from the owner of the home, but we have allowed home occupations for applicants that have requested a home occupation in a home that they rent. Does that clarify anything for you?
Yeah, my, my, my concern is, is that a home occupation permit is for the person who lives in the house, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay. So what we're looking at here is a situation that's not quite parallel to that.
Your Honor, that's correct. And as a home occupation, I would have to look to see specifically what it says, but I do believe in home occupation, that's what it says.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Your Honor, I guess the other, the other question I would have is, I mean, if I, if I own a home in Riverton that I live in four months out of the year, and I own a home in Arizona that I live in the rest of the year, that was not very different from this situation. And, and I don't think that the city would get into splitting hairs to the point to say that you couldn't use your home that you own and live in four months out of the year. Riverton, to do some sort of a... Riverton to do some sort of business. So I, I guess, I guess to me, I don't see why it really, in this particular case, matters. They, they have some ownership interest in the home very obviously, so...
Thank you. Any other comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. The next item of business is interviews for vacant council seat in Ward Two. Um, the council candidate interviews will be conducted individually. Uh, council candidates will be given 10 minutes to answer the interview questions and we will interview the candidates in the following order. Richard Bennett first, then John Bash, Sarah Callback, Jacob Mickelson, and Holly Gibbon. So the first candidate, Richard Bennett. Uh, we have some prepared questions. Uh, the candidates have been given a copy of this, uh, prior to the, uh, meeting, so they've been able to have a little time to prepare and, um, and we'll, we'll try to treat everybody the same.
Your Honor, can I, can I just make one comment before we start in the sense of, Mary Ellen Christensen had initially was in the six here and she called and was asked to pull her name out of it because of time constraints.
Okay.
So there may be people confused as to why she's not on that list and that's, that's why.
Thank you.
Your Honor? Um, as I recall, last time we went about this process, we actually asked the candidates who were going to be interviewed later to step out of chambers. Is that something we still want to do or...
Your Honor, we did do that last time, but that was because we didn't share the questions with everybody and this time we let them all know it, so, um, they're all on the same playing field.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we'll start with, uh, Jonathan Fabian.
Uh, Mr. Bennett, would you, uh, first of all, thanks for coming and, uh, my question for you is, please tell us about yourself and why you decided to, uh, put your name in the hat for the council.
My name is Richard Bennett. Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. Why I decided to run for the council is, uh, I want to give back to this community what I've gotten from this community. I've lived here for sixty-three years. I'm sixty-three years old. Born and raised in Riverton, Wyoming. I've gone through, when Riverton was probably about five thousand people up to where it is now. I've seen many different things, uh, go on in the city and county and been, uh, part of it, uh, been very involved. Started my political career in seventh grade when I ran for, uh, school treasurer. And I won, so I was school treasurer in seventh grade for that class. And it got me interested in staying involved. I don't know why I'm shaking. Feel like I'm on, well, I am on the spot. Um, I want to give back. I have gotten a lot from the city of Riverton and I want to give it back. And I feel that this is one way that I can go ahead and, uh, use my knowledge and skills that I have gotten by growing up in Riverton, going to school in Riverton, graduating from CWC with a degree in Associates of Business Management, and to, uh, continue on in helping and serving others in this capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Evening, Mr. Bennett. Uh, what does it mean to you to do public service or be a public servant?
What it means to me to be a public servant and to serve the public is, it's basically giving to that person who's in need of service, uh, irregardless of where they come from, who they are, or whatever they need. Now then, sitting as city council person, I know that, uh, sometimes you get called about certain grievances that cities have, be it snow being on a sidewalk and, or garbage not being picked up timely or something like this. And so you can't automatically say, okay, it'll be taken care of. You need to go ahead and digest and find out what is going on and then make the proper calls and justifications and then see if you can help them out in any way. Sometimes it means going beyond and actually doing the nuts and bolts and doing it yourself to get it done. It doesn't mean just calling and picking somebody else to go ahead and do the job. You might have to step up to the plate and do the job yourself. But to serve the public is to, um, is to serve the best to your ability to help those others that are in need.
Mr. Martinez?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Bennett. How are you?
Evening, Mr. Martinez.
What attributes would you bring to the council if the council decided to appoint you?
The attributes that I feel that would be beneficial to the council is, uh, my past record that I have served on numerous boards and commissions, uh, privately and publicly. Served with the Good Samaritan Center, uh, Chamber of Commerce, the local, uh, Elks Lodge, um, Riverton J.C.'s. Served as Chamber of Commerce President, I think I might have said that before, uh, but I have served in the community. Uh, I do have a degree, like I said, in Business Management, Associate's Degree. Um, presently, I am an activity driver, route driver for School District Twenty-Five. In the past, I've been a substitute teacher for School District Twenty-Five and School District Thirty-Eight, Rappahoe. I'm also a trainer for the bus garage where I train other drivers to drive. I participate in the safety meetings for safety of buses. And I do travel the state and see other things that's going on in other cities, towns. So I think that I would be very qualified to, uh, help out where needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Canaan?
Sir, you've, you've given us some of your, your background. Could you give us some specifics, excuse me, as to which parts of your background, uh, would prepare you to be a, a council member?
Um, being on the board of directors of a bank, you get to see the different financial aspects of major businesses and stuff, so you know how to read a financial report. And being as I did serve on the, uh, local bank, which came Key Bank and then was sold to Bank of the West, I served on that board for about eight years. And so that gave me a background in financial analysis and with my Associate's Degree in Business Management and my long-term business of selling beer, that also gave me a vast knowledge of different personalities of people to deal with. Um, I think that's, that's some of it. Some of it was, uh, the different organizations that I've been involved in, um, with the chamber, going around talking to different business owners and stuff, being on the same ground level as them, working with them. I think that has also, uh, given me some type of help in dealing with different issues that might come before the council that I can use my expertise to help the council in making the wise decisions.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey?
So what do you perceive as the most important concerns facing Riverton?
Well, if the oil and gas would, uh, go up to a hundred dollars a barrel, I think we'd be a lot happier. Um, the major concerns I see in the city right now is we're at a stage where we're in a flex, where are we going to grow? How much are we going to grow? Do we have the infrastructure set in place? Do we have a plan for the infrastructure? How much more police protection are we going to need if we do get, once Job Corps is up and running? Is that, is that part of the plan that's being developed? Um, working with the young people in Riverton, how, it's a skate park coming along. Is that going to be a workable situation as much funds going to be available for it? Um, just the day-to-day operations of the city, what is needed in the city, uh, what type of improvements are needed or perceived to be needed? And what we can do as city council members to ensure that the citizens of Riverton are getting the most out of their tax dollars.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bennett, for coming and, uh, gotten to know you quite a little bit better than I did. Uh, what roles do you think city government should fill?
The roles of city government or roles that city government should fill are the roles of, uh, being the key keeper or the gatekeeper for all the city funds that come in, to make sure that they're wisely spent where they should be. Not in frivolous endeavors, but to keep a, uh, tight rein on those funds, to be a conservative in some of the spending, to make sure that we get the best value out of the buck that we're going to spend. Um, don't sometimes take the shortcut and end up with a problem in the, in the back, you know? Just make sure we use level heads, make level decisions, following the procedures set forth and the policies set forth by the city council. And following the constitution and guidelines and everything within the law. Um, you guys had a clean audit last year. That was fantastic. No lawsuits coming. That's, that's fantastic. I don't know if that's because of the paperwork that the city makes you go through if you're going to sue the city or if it's, nobody has any major complaints to the city. Um, I'm hoping that nobody has any major complaints with the city and that's why no lawsuits came up. But I think our roles in Allen City Council is to give the best impressions we can and do the best job for the citizens of Riverton, the ones that either appoint us in this case or the ones that elect us. And so to get to know your constituents, your neighbors, people in Riverton is the best way of doing that. And the best way of doing that is to just be open, honest, and forthright with your, uh, comments.
Thank you. Appreciate your, appreciate your application.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person is John Bash.
For a minute, I was going to get some help.
Yeah, okay, the first question will be Jonathan Fabian.
Good evening, John. Thanks for coming tonight. Um, so my question for you is, uh, please tell us about yourself and why you decided to run for the council.
Well, I've, uh, been a resident of Riverton since nineteen seventy-two. Uh, had a business here for over thirty years, about thirty-five years altogether. Uh, I've been involved in civic activities almost since day one. Uh, I have a background that I feel could potentially be of advantage to, uh, various problems and questions that might come before the city council. And, uh, I feel that everybody has an obligation to do what they can to, uh, justify their existence on this earth, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson? John, what does it, uh, mean to you to be a public servant?
Primarily to make myself known to all of the citizens within my jurisdiction that I cover and make them aware of how they can contact me and, uh, let me know what their thoughts and desires are. And, uh, then review those various comments, uh, research them, uh, find out basically what can the city do or what should they not do and, uh, go from there.
Good evening, Mr. Bash. How are you? Uh, what attributes would you bring to the council if the council decided to appoint you?
Well, one of the things is my, uh, longevity in business and some of the things that I worked with was, uh, primarily other businesses. I worked with a very large variety from manufacturing to, uh, want many re-different types of retail sales. Uh, the parts I was involved with, with them was setting up software to manage their business. Uh, it included the point-of-sale or counter activities, inventory management, and the accounting software that went along with running a business. And I feel that I have a background there that could be very advantageous in looking at, uh, businesses that we have here in Riverton and others that may want to come into Riverton.
Councilmember Canaan?
And sir, you've, you've given us some of your background. Could you give us some specific examples of things in your background, uh, that would help you prepare to be a councilman?
Uh, one of the big things that went along with that business activities that I had was that, uh, I did a lot of training of people to run this product, these products, these software products. And not only the training, but more importantly, I think, I supported it after the fact. Uh, I worked with a lot of different types of people, how to operate this, how to operate their business, how to operate the software. Uh, they would come up with problems that, uh, varied from, uh, asking them to bother to check and see if the system was plugged in to getting down to the nitty-gritty about how to actually run the software. Uh, I'm thinking that this gives me, uh, gave me a fair amount of experience in, uh, general ledger work, payroll, uh, various accounting functions, uh, how to manage inventory, which is something that I'm, I think the city does. Uh, we have, I believe the city owns quite a few pieces of equipment. They have to do depreciation on it. I'm sure you have people that analyze, but it's something that I could look at also.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey? What do you perceive as the most important concerns facing Riverton right now?
Let Riverton take care of their own business and get the state and the feds out. That is really not as facetious a remark as you might think, but I think Riverton's objective is to take care of the people of Riverton. We are the first ones that they should talk to and come to if there's problems here. We're also the first ones that needs to look out for their welfare. Uh, I believe that too many things come down from farther up that disrupt our ability to do that.
Thank you, John. Uh, what roles do you think, uh, city government should fill?
I think I just enumerated. I really don't have specific roles except that what they need to do is look at what's going on around the city. Part of what you acted on tonight was the, uh, uh, childcare bill. There are things like that that need a certain amount of governmental oversight. Uh, the problem is to do the oversight that is necessary and does not exceed what would be necessary.
Thank you. Our next candidate this evening is Sarah Callback. Sarah?
Good evening.
So the first question is, uh, Councilmember Fabian?
Good evening, Sarah. Thanks for coming tonight. Um, so my question for you is, would you please tell us about yourself and why you decided to run for the council?
Well, I'm Sarah Callback. I've been married for twenty-six years to Keith. I'm a mother of four. I'm a retired paramedic with twenty-plus years of experience doing that. Homeschooled my three sons through high school and my daughter through eighth grade. I'm technically the president of Tomahawk Motel Incorporated. Practically, I'm the general manager, chief cook and bottle washer, and the person who calls nine-one-one if the situation arises. I run because I'm, I enjoy serving the community. I love to be part of making things work and I've never been one to sit on the sidelines and let others do the heavy lifting. I feel like if I have a complaint about something, I need to be part of the solution or part of help finding a solution. If I can be a part of helping others find solutions to their issues, then I've done what I came to do. I started volunteering when I got to Riverton about ten years ago, working with the Riverton Master Plan. And then I started my involvement with the Wyoming, uh, Lodging and Restaurant Association and eventually the Wind River Visitors Council after I served on the... and eventually the Wind River Visitors Council after I served on the city council.
Councilmember Larson. Sarah, tell me, how would you be a public servant to Riverton?
I like being of service. I like helping solve problems. For me, that means of being available to listen to people without prejudice, discovering what their needs are. It's learning from people and pointing them to the right services, or if need be, as a councilwoman, I'm the liaison between my constituents and the council. My duty as a councilwoman is to bring what my constituents say to the council and use those ideas and thoughts as guidelines. I also realize as a councilwoman, I'm responsible for managing the city's money. And anytime we spend the city's money, it's not the city's. It's in reality, the citizens of the city's money. And I am responsible for making sure it's well-spent. Doesn't mean we go cheap. It means we get the best value for what we've purchased.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez.
Good evening, Sarah. How are you?
I'm doing good.
What attributes would you bring to the council if this Riverton City Council decided to appoint you?
Well, as you've probably recognized, I've never met a stranger. I can and will talk to anybody, and I have my own opinions, and that doesn't make me the only right opinion. I have the ability to listen and not be run over by the other party, and I can work comfortably with almost anyone unless I'm standing in front of a group of people with a camera. I'm fair-minded and willing to compromise if needed. I'm also a person who loves to study the issues and look outside the boxes for answers.
Councilmember Canaan.
And ma'am, again, you've given us some of your background. Could you give us some specific examples that would prepare you to be a councilwoman?
Three things. Before I came to Riverton, I was a paramedic. I worked eleven of those years as a high-performance medic in Tulsa, twelve sixteen twenty-four hour shifts with at least that many calls per shift. I've seen it all. I've dealt with the public in the best and worst of circumstances, from natural disasters to delivering babies. I think on my feet, and I'm a firm decision-maker. Very little's going to surprise or startle me. When I came to Riverton, I switched gears to being an innkeeper. Again, I'm working with the public. I've dealt with the worst of human behavior and the best. Very little phases me, and I have found there's usually a way to persuade folks to do what's good, right, and honest, and I'm pretty good at it. To say the least, I'm a problem solver. In nineteen, in 2006, I went back to school. In '08, I received a master's degree in public administration from UW. It was an opportunity to learn about how companies and governments work from the management side. It opened my eyes to how to work with people on a corporate and community level. It taught me to look at the big picture for the long term, a handy perspective to have in city government. I put that to use the first time I was appointed to city council in '09. Since leaving council in '11, I've used those skills to serve on the Wind River Visitors Council, of which I'm now the president, and as a board member of the Wyoming Lodging and Restaurant Association until 2013.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Bailey.
What do you perceive as the most important issues facing Riverton?
We need to continue facilitating the civic groups and other interested parties to improve Riverton. What we've done with our recreation and their new skating rink is fantastic. The skate park, the Central Wyoming Skateboard Association. The work the city has done to facilitate those folks in providing a great service for our kids is fantastic. And I know other groups that would be willing and have been willing to step forward with ideas, manpower, and money to improve certain areas of the city. Riverwalks, rendezvous site, Rails to Trails. All they ask is our permission, the ability of the city to facilitate grants, and our ability to give them access to the areas. We need to enforce existing ordinances before adding new ones, and we have to enforce them equally across the board, not pick and choose because of complaints. If we don't have the manpower to enforce, they need to be repealed or not passed to begin with. In campaigning for council this summer, those were the biggest concerns. Chickens in the backyard, people with roosters, nuisance weeds, and abandoned vehicles. There's a lot of frustrations, and when you're knocking on somebody's door, they're more than happy to tell you about it. And yes, there's roosters in my neighborhood. Other things people brought up, it's the biggest thing I've heard. We've got to plow the streets in the wintertime. Primary, secondary, then tertiary, and surely we can work out a way to finance that. Comp time, extra pay, some way. As always, continuing the dialogue with the tribes to maintain Riverton's autonomy and borders.
Thank you. What do you think the role of city government should be?
Government should do what individuals can't do on their own. That would in its simplest form be maintain infrastructure, streets, sewers, water, garbage, utilities. Provide adequate security, police and fire protection. Maintain adequate ambulance services, and although people whine, see to the building, fire, electrical, and safety codes. If all of these are working properly, they facilitate commerce, bring people to the community, and make Riverton a nice place to live.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The next candidate is Jacob Mickelson. Welcome this evening, and the first question will be from Jonathan Fabian.
Hello, Jacob. Thanks for coming tonight. My question is for you to please tell us about yourself and why you decided to run for the city council.
Thank you, councilman, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council, men and women of the city staff, and everybody who came out to see this thing, and to my parents watching at home, hello. My name is Jacob Mickelson. I'm a longtime resident of Riverton, Wyoming, ever since my parents and family decided to move here when I was in fifth grade. I've lived here more or less consistency in the and I consider the city to be my home. I am at the moment, and for the last two years, a librarian. I find this to be incredibly gratifying. I more or less run the teen area, up the road at the Riverton branch of the Fremont County system. And every day, a two-hundred, seven-hundred-person cross-section of our blocks through the front door. I've seen people at their very best and people at their very worst there. And I think I've got a pretty good grasp on just who's in the city and the kinds of things that those people might need. I've decided to put my name in the hat for council because I'm tired of myself and people in my generation just complaining. I'd like to start doing, and I know other people would like to start doing, so I figured, start at the top. This would be a fabulous place to begin. As I mentioned, people of my generation have generally no great love for the city of Riverton. From middle school on up, all I heard from my peers were, "I hate it here, and I can't wait to get out." They don't want to do what their parents did. They don't want to stay and raise a family. They don't want to stay and start a business, and that's just not sustainable. I'd love to see the people of my generation, my peers and cohorts, stay here, move back to here. So many of my friends have moved on to begin their lives elsewhere. I would love for them to see starting their family or starting their business in Riverton, in their hometown, as not only a viable option, but the most attractive one.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson. Jacob, tell me about being a public servant.
Well, conveniently, I already am one. I believe that the definition of a public servant is exactly that, one who serves the public. It's an opportunity to be a part of our community on a daily basis, to provide for people the things with which they cannot provide themselves. Like I say, at the library, we see people every day. We get kids who come in after school at three o'clock. They don't leave until nine o'clock when we close. They don't eat dinner. We see people who come in, actually, just this morning. I was involved with some of my coworkers in helping a group of about half a dozen computer-illiterate adults learn some skills necessary to apply for a job online. You might not know it, but you can't get a job at Arby's without knowing how to use a computer. So things like this, that people, there's maybe no infrastructure in place for, that people don't know how to get the help they need, that's public service. Helping people to get the things they need to help themselves. I enjoy listening to people, and I enjoy trying to solve their problems. That problem might just be, what's a good book to read? But that problem might also be, what documents do I need to get my child back? What documents do I need to help my child pay for school? Important things like that, and I've found it to be an incredibly gratifying experience helping people resolve those.
Councilmember Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Mickelson. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, thank you. My question to you is, what attributes would you bring to this council if the council decided to appoint you?
You mean besides my rugged good looks? Sorry. Honestly, honesty is one of the first ones. In interacting with the public, it's vital to be beyond reproach. Being straightforward in all of one's doings with the public is an absolutely integral part in serving the public interest and maintaining the public trust. I'm young. I'm, as a result of that, vigorous. I've got a lot of attention to detail, which is to be expected of a librarian, I suppose. I'm enthusiastic towards this, and I'm dedicated, both to my community and towards our whole area and state as a whole. I quite like Wyoming, and I quite like Riverton, and I would like to serve it in any way that I can.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Again, you've given us some of your background. Could you give us some specific examples that would prepare you to be a council member?
Certainly. As I've mentioned, I've spent the last two or so years working as a librarian, and that's a, gives you a pretty firm grasp on the citizens and the kinds of problems that people are having. It's the one place in the city where people are encouraged to loiter. You hear a lot of interesting stories from people who are nowhere else to go. We see the homeless, the hungry, the tired, and the bored. And dealing with those people, really, I think, has given me a very good handle on what are the people of this city want and need. It's also given me a pretty developed grasp of the importance of a sense of civic duty. If it wasn't for people willing to give up their spare time, I'm sure everyone here has somewhere that they would maybe rather be, at home with the kids, or off in the mountains, or wherever. But it's that sense of civic duty that's been instilled in me that I think would be very valuable to this council. I'm also fairly well-traveled and even better read, so I've seen and heard and read a lot of ideas on how to do just about anything the world over. And I'm never one to take, well, we've always done it that way, as an answer. If it can't hold up under discussion, then it shouldn't be done. Before I was a librarian, I worked everything from fast food to heavy industrial construction, which taught me not just the value of honest work, but just how hard some people have it. Not everybody was like me in their early twenties out there, making good money to either put towards school, or some of them a new house, or what have you. A lot of those guys were out there because they had a family at home that they had to support. And a lot of the people working fast food are only doing that to support themselves and their family. They've got children, they've got elderly relatives. And it's given me a real appreciation for how lucky I am and how difficult life has been for some other people.
Thank you, Councilman Bailey.
What do you perceive as the most important issues facing Riverton?
Number one would just about have to be brain drain. Our talented young people are leaving and not returning. Talented folks from around the country aren't really jumping head over heels to come to Riverton. I know in the library system search for a director, it took quite some time. We were without one for a while, and then we went out of the community to find somebody. The same has been true of CWC in their search for a new president. It's difficult to attract new people to an area where even the current talent isn't particularly keen on staying, and that is something that I think is overwhelmingly important to address. I've also noticed a bit of a lack of civic pride. People like to complain. People like to make noise, but they don't necessarily like to channel that noise in anything productive. And that's, it's a bit of an attitude problem, but I think that the city council has been, in many ways, in community development issues, instrumental in resolving that attitude. But I know that there is still something of a lack of civic pride, and this should be the organization to turn that around.
Thank you. What roles do you think city government should fill?
Well, I believe it should do essentially what it does now, administer utilities, all the things that people cannot do for themselves. You can't, everybody can't be responsible for their own water. Everybody can't be responsible for their electricity. So city government exists to provide those things which we have to come together to create and to provide them in the most democratic and equitable way possible. I believe it should continue to administer utilities, administer and improve public spaces, encourage a friendly business climate, actively support community beautification. I know in the community master plan, there's been, there's, it made mention of the entrances and exits to the city could probably stand some cleaning up or making nice, and it's true. When you cruise into Riverton, it's not too beautiful to behold. And I think a little bit of help from the council, and then working together with the citizens to really clean things up and make it a vibrant, exciting place to live. And finally, I think that the city should act as a connection point, or a connection and point of first contact for people who need help. If somebody has any kind of an issue, they should think to themselves, "Oh, the city council are the ones who are supposed to be looking out for me, citizen of Riverton. They're the ones who I should ask." And I'm not saying we need to unilaterally support anybody with an issue, but we should be the ones who know where the help they need is located and how best they should go about getting it. I believe that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your application.
Absolutely.
The next candidate is Holly Gibbon. Our first question will be from Councilman Fabian.
Good evening, Holly. Thanks for joining us tonight. Can you please tell us about yourself and why you decided to run for the city council?
My name's Holly Gibbon, and I own Hollywood Photography. I was born and raised here in Fremont County. My husband and I have been married now for eight years, and he and I kind of had to discuss it with a bunch of our friends, and they all kind of came to the same agreement that there's no young people on the council. And so when I expanded out on that and started talking to people within just my ward, and then including other wards, that was the biggest consensus, is that it wasn't because you guys aren't really nice. It's because they don't feel as though they can just come to you and talk because they don't feel as though they're going to be heard in the sense of our generation. And so when I talked to my husband, my husband and I both agreed that this would be a really good opportunity to try to see if I can make a difference.
Thank you. Councilman Larson. Holly, I'm happy you're coming in here. What does it mean to you to be a public servant?
I feel as though, I don't want to try to repeat myself from what everybody else has just said, but I feel as though it means putting your personal interests aside and being able to go for the greater good first. It means no matter what the organization is, the act of serving others has to come first. And I believe that that's the core value that will strengthen our community. Being a public servant is a responsibility. It means making sure that others are taken care of, and it's not just that one person. It's what the majority wants and what everybody needs. It's not just going and telling one person, "Yep, this is exactly what you'll get. No problem. We'll make sure that gets done," and then going and telling the next person, "Well, I don't know exactly if that's going to get done." You have to make sure that it's consensus across the board. And that even though you may come in and you think one way, you may end up walking away thinking something else when you're sitting on the council, and you have to be able to relay that to them and express that, you know, what sounded out as a good idea to begin with either was or wasn't at the end. And knowing that they're not going to be disappointed because you honestly tried. You didn't just say you were going to, and then you walked away, and nothing ever got completed.
Thank you, Councilman Martinez.
Good evening, Holly. How are you?
Good, how are you?
What attributes would you bring to the council if the Riverton City Council decided to appoint you?
I feel as though I'm very honest, sometimes almost too honest. You always know where you stand with me, and I'm not going to stand up here and be the politician. I'm going to stand up here and just be me, and I'm going to be honest. I'm going to tell you exactly what I think the public wants, and not what you guys want to hear or what the public wants to hear. It's always going to be the truth, no matter what. I feel as though I'm a hard worker. I'm very energetic. Being young, I've started my own business within the last four years, and I've made a really good go at it. And yet, I feel as though there's other people that would want to do it, but they just don't know if they can. And so consequently, I feel as though being able to come and be serving on the council, other people are going to be like, "Well, hey, if she did that, I bet I can too." Because it is very intimidating to stand up here along your peers and have to say, "You know what? I really want this, and I think that I'd be really good at it, so."
Thank you, Councilman Canaan.
Again, ma'am, you've given us some of your background. Could you give us some specifics that would prepare you to be a councilwoman?
I have done just about everything. When I graduated Tashone, I was the FFA president there, so I'm very familiar with how procedures work and such, especially with parliamentary procedure. And when I got done, I went to North Dakota and I went And when I got done, I went to North Dakota and I went to college. So, I've been the broke college student eating ramen noodles and working for Applebee's. And yet, when I moved back here, I needed to make fast money, so I went and I worked for Neighbors Drilling. So, I'm used to working with guys instead. And so I feel as though that's something really important just because it's a different atmosphere. I've also worked as different things around town. I went while pregnant with my son, became a CNA, decided that I wasn't good at that, but I did do the course. I feel as though starting my own business while being a mom with my husband gone all the time, I'm very detailed in it with that. And knowing that, like for, sorry. A lot of the things that I've done, I've put myself into a situation that I definitely have to be able to work harder at. And so being able to come here, I feel as though I could do the same thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Bailey?
What do you perceive as the most important concerns facing Riverton?
That our young people don't feel as though they're being hurt. If you think about it, when you figure out statistically, 23.9% of our community is under the age of 18 and yet only about a fourth of those people are getting involved in their community. And yet by the time they're 18, now they're legal to vote, they're moving out of Riverton onto bigger and better things. The families that I talk to that have small children, they say the daycare is the worst thing. They don't feel as though the ones that we do have are up to the standard that they feel as though, they feel safe putting their kid in and leaving them there for eight hours. 25% of the population is under 44 and they feel as though they're not able to come to the council meetings because they don't feel as though, "You guys are going to remember that you guys were all young once and that you had the little kids and you had all those problems." And I feel as though we need to open that line of communication up again and let, make sure that they know, half the times they don't even know that they can come to the city council meetings to bring whatever problem it is. They just feel like, you know, they need to deal with it on their own. So, opening that big line of communication, I think, will definitely help.
Have you given any thought to what roles city government should play in our lives?
First, it's just listening and trying to resolve the residents' concerns, making sure that when we're passing the annual budget, that we're making sure that the community has brought their concerns forth, but yet we have enough money and we stay on budgets that we can be able to progress year after year. I feel as though one of the roles of the council is to make sure that we try to get new ideas and always have new situations, because new situations are going to arise and maybe step out of the box in our thinking. You have to be problem solvers and you have to look on both sides of the fence. And you always have to be fair, but you have to look out for the best interests of the community. And finally, just to ensure that the community has a good quality of life.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your application and your interest in being on the city council, all of you. We're excited to have five candidates tonight that we can pick from. And in order to facilitate that activity, we're going to go into an executive session for a few minutes to consider the appointment, employment right to practice dismissal, complaints or charges against a public officer, professional person or employee in accordance with Wyoming statute 16-4-405A2 and for the purposes of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming statute 16-4-405A10. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Your honor, I move that we move into executive session?
Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Are there any opposed? We're in executive session.
Your honor, I would move to reconvene into general session.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Boy, this is really tough, folks. We have, we've got, we've got some terrific candidates here. And the way we're going to do this is we're going to have a vote here. The council members will pick their first choice and we'll ask the chief of police and our city administrator to count the votes and tell us how it's going to come out. And we've got a second ballot here in case we wind up with a tie. We had a tie the other day when we were trying to elect council leadership. And so we've got enough ballots to make sure we can deal with a tie. And so let's mark our ballots and I'll have the chief come pick them up, okay? I'm really impressed here that we've got, we've got some really good candidates. And I'll make an announcement at the present time that, you know, we have some vacancies. We have vacancies on the planning commission, we have vacancies on the airport board, we've got vacancies on a couple of other boards for the city. And those of you who are interested and want to serve in city government, these are great opportunities to bring your experience and your counsel to the city. Do you have a?
We do, your honor. Our newly elected Ward Two council will be Holly Gibbon.
Thank you very much. So, let's see, I'm supposed to, I think, I think I'm supposed to, well, I think we're going to, there's something, there's something here that was on here that we're going to approve that as a, as an announcement, appointment administration. Okay. So, we're going to, I think the next thing is swearing in, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, oath of office. Okay. So, would you meet me at the podium? Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. All right. So, raise your right hand, okay? And repeat, repeat after me. Maybe I could put this here where you could actually read it. I solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly.
That I have not knowingly.
Violated any law related to my election.
Violated any law related to my election.
Or appointment.
Or appointment.
Or caused it to be.
Or caused it to be.
Done by others.
Done by others.
That I will discharge my duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with my fidelity.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And you can take your seat. I have to reflect that I filled a council seat on the city council a number of years ago by appointment. I filled out an expired term. And I came in here and they elected me or selected me to be the person that filled that and I got sworn in. I thought maybe next week they'd swear me in, you know? And so then I got sworn in and they took me up here and sat me right in that chair, okay? And then they adjourned to executive session. And I really got educated about city government. We're not going to do that tonight, Holly.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a thing to say. Do we have a copy of the agenda for Holly?
There's one right, here comes, oh, she's, she's got, she's got a script. Okay. She knows what I'm supposed to say.
I'm watching you.
Okay. So, okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 1309, Authorization for Wyoming Community Gas Grant Application. City administrators, report, please.
Yes, your honor. The city has been a member of the Wyoming Community Gas since 1996 and the Wyoming Community Gas has a grant program that you can apply for money up to $2,500. Annually, the Wyoming Community Gas distributes earnings back to its member communities for developments of art, culture and community improvement. In addition to the distribution, YCG also has grant opportunities which we're applying for here. In 2007, the city passed a records management ordinance which mirrored Wyoming and state statutes pursuant to preservation, destruction, disposition and storing of public records. We have managed and maintained several hundred cubic feet of records dating back to 1905 and 1906, when the town of Riverton was first established. At staff's recommendation, we submitted an application through the Wyoming Community Gas to procure a display cabinet for the main greeting area and in there we would put historical documents that we have stored in the vault right now that no one gets to see or use, or not use, because we don't want them to use because they're old. Some of those are the first water bill, we have a, our first water bill that was a postcard dating back to 1914 with a one cent stamp, minute books, publications, receipt books. And we anticipate the cost is somewhere about $4,500 and this would go towards that. They also, Wyoming Community Gas also has a program where they give money back every year that could help with this too. But we need a resolution to apply for this grant and we need it from the council in support of that so we can go ahead and purchase that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the acting city clerk please read Resolution 1309 by title only?
Yes, your honor. A resolution of the governing body of the city of Riverton, supporting the submission of a grant application to the Wyoming Community Gas Grant Program.
I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 1309.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor?
Go ahead, Councilman Fabian.
So, the deficit will just have to come from general fund or is there, or were you going to apply for the other monies or how?
Your honor, we can either do it through budget, it was stated in the staff report, because we don't, I think we apply for it, but it wouldn't happen until the next fiscal year anyway. The other thing that we can do is they have monies that they come and give and we can contribute to that. It's supposed to be for some type of improvement where they like to put their logo on there so we could use some of that too. But either way, we're going to have to budget the difference, either through the budget process or through an additional grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of applying for the grant from Wyoming Community Gas, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Mayor says aye. Resolution 1310, a resolution supporting the newly created Fremont Air Service Task Force, acronym FAST. City administrators, report.
Yes, your honor. I think you actually came up with that, if I remember right.
I don't think so.
So, this is the resolution of our discussion we had at the work session. Missy White, the chairman of the Airport Task Force, requested that Fremont County, the city of Landor and the city of Riverton adopt a resolution in support of the creation of a 501(c)(6) that would help improve the air service here at the Riverton Regional Airport. So, on January 13th, we talked about that. There was a general consensus that people were in support of that. So, this resolution states that we are in support of the creation of FAST, which is the Fremont Air Service Task Force, and to apply for a 501(c)(6) to facilitate and represent regional interests and improve reliable air service to the Riverton Regional Airport. This does not include anything related to a commitment of funds at this time. It's simply a support resolution so that they know they can move forward with this. At some point in the future, they'd be coming back with that revenue guaranteed to be asking for money at that point. So, this is really just a supported, and they know that we're in support of moving forward on this, on this task force and the 501(c)(6).
Thank you. Would the acting city clerk please read Resolution 1310 by title only?
Yes, your honor. A resolution supporting the newly created Fremont Air Service Task Force, FAST, and applying for a 501(c)(6) to improve reliable air service to Riverton Regional Airport.
Is there a motion?
Your honor, I would move that we approve Resolution 1310, the creation of a 501(c)(6).
Second. Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Mr. Martinez.
Do we have any kind of commitment from Landor in Fremont County on this?
Your honor, we have forwarded this exact resolution because Landor was asking for a similar one and, because they want it to be uniform. And so the idea is that all the, that other two entities will adopt the same resolution.
Thank you. And only going to go to Landor, not DuBois?
What they, your honor, what they did want is just the three main communities or the three big participants in this to adopt resolutions. We have not considered some of the smaller communities like Pavilion or Hudson or DuBois. That's something we could obviously move through. Because as we've talked about a revenue guarantee, most of the smaller communities said, "I don't know if we could come up with any money to even help with those type of things." So, it would be more of a...
But, but we're not asking for revenue guarantees. We're asking for, it's going to be a, it's a, it's not a Riverton Airport, unfortunately. We need everybody to be participants in this, whether they're going to put money up or not. They'll put money up when they buy a ticket, I guarantee you that.
No, your honor, that's a great point and that's, we can forward those to the other entities and encourage them to adopt the same resolution.
Certainly, that would lend support to the idea of, you know, the entire county being behind the effort, even if at some point in time, when we're asking for money, smaller communities find it difficult to find very much to contribute toward that revenue guarantee. Go ahead.
Where do we apply for this and how long does it take? 501(c), is it Treasury Department or the IRS?
Your honor, that's applied through the IRS and it would be done through the FAST organization.
Lois Lerner.
Excuse me?
Lois Lerner.
Oh.
Never mind.
That is correct, yes.
If I'm correct, that establishes a nonprofit organization to handle the funding. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. We are down to council committee reports and council member roundtable. So, let's, let's start with, no, you haven't watched this, have you? Okay. So, Councilman Bailey, you've gotten to do this once before.
Yes. Thank you, your honor. I did not have any committees or anything that I was, since... I did not have any committees or anything that I was, since the last two weeks. But again, I am very pleased to see five or six people come out and apply for this open city council position. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think we need to encourage people to be as active in their government as possible, because to me, one of the saddest things I see sitting in council meetings and planning commission meetings and that kind of stuff, is we sit here a lot of times with an empty room in front of us, and we make decisions without the ability to get input from the public. And I think we deeply desire that, and we need it. And so, I think we need to encourage people to do that. And I applaud you all for applying for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Conan?
Sir, I guess I have more of a, I don't wanna put Mr. Weaver on the spot, but I guess maybe at the next work session, I'd like a little bit of a update, if we could, on the status of the beautification committee, if we've received any applications, and on the initiative to kind of round up the utility bills. Spring, spring eventually will be here, and, and those are the types of things that we'll be thinking about at that time. So, maybe if we get the ball rolling a little bit early on, on those type of, couple of things.
Great.
Your Honor, I think we have two applications right now for the beautification committee. But we need more. Two's not enough. So, if there's people out there in, in the audience or in Riverton that are interested beyond the beautification committee, please submit a letter of interest to, to the mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Fabian?
Thank you, Mayor. No official committee reports, but I do wanna say that we're entering what I consider to be one of the most fun times of winter in Riverton. The Wild West Winter Carnival is getting into full swing. And so, I would just like to encourage people to, to take note of the events that are ongoing. Some of them already began, and I believe events will go through February 8th, mostly on the weekend. The treasure hunt is, is currently going on, I believe, so you can watch for clues of where, where to look. I believe the newspaper. And ice fishing derby this weekend. There's a poker run this weekend. And a kids' carnival down at the new children's museum downtown is also gonna be going on. Also, look for your winter carnival button if you, if you don't have one. I know they're available around. Ms. Lures, where are good places to get those?
Buttons are available at the Ranger, at the Chamber, at the casino, and probably in my office.
Excellent. So, yes, please, please take advantage, you know? It's, it's not, it's not all the time that we have this many events going on in Riverton. So, please take advantage of, of this wonderful time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate and thank everybody for the applications, all five candidates, and congratulations, Holly. Last night, we had the school district number 25 recreation board grant meeting, and we had 22 people that applied for the grants for a total of $332,328.85. We have a total of $301,616.16 available. So, we're gonna make some cuts. Last year, we donated $262,328.85. Of this grant applications for this year, $70,000 go to ARFOR Rec. for $34,000, and the Riverton Aquatic Center for a total of $34,000, which comes out to a grand total of applications for $262,328.85. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee, for your service on that, on the rec board for many, many years. And I know you'll be a good liaison for the council there. Councilman Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna really express my thanks, my thanks that the candidates came out tonight. It's, it's heartwarming to see that people want to volunteer to work, make a place better. Along with making a place better, I really enjoy the ice rink that City of Riverton is maintaining, and our rec is providing rental skates and lights at night. It's, it's a lot of fun to take your kids there and to go ice skating. It's, it's really fun. Last, but not least, last Friday, we had a meeting with Rhodes, the One-Cent Committee. And let me tell you, they're ready to plow roads and to survey and to do anything they possibly can. And it's, it's, it's heartwarming to know that people care. But they not only care, they put their actions first. Thank you.
Thank you. You see how it's done?
See that?
Okay. So, it's your turn to say anything if you, if you'd like to make a comment.
I'd just like to thank you guys for listening to me and now being part of the council. And I hope that I do a really good job for you guys.
Well, we, we hope so, too. And we, we look forward to our, our interactions with you. I, I want you to, to not be afraid to raise your hand, okay? And, and because every one of us here at one time had to raise our hand and say, I don't understand what you're doing. Okay? And because what happens is that this kind of gets automatic. Okay? And so, be sure to, be sure to, to ask questions when, when you're, when it's vague and you don't know what's going on. And, and we're, we're glad to have you among us. And I'm sure that the staff will be in touch to get all of the necessary paperwork signed.
Right, that'll work.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, great. All right. So, I'm, I'm grateful this evening that we had so many good candidates. And in my mind, we could not have made a bad decision tonight. There, we had, it wouldn't have mattered who got, who got appointed to fill this out of the five candidates that we had. It wouldn't have mattered who we'd appointed. We would've had somebody that was dedicated to the citizens of Riverton and, and willing to perform the services that, that the job requires. And, and would've done it in a thoughtful, kind, and caring manner. And, and to me, that's, that's absolutely marvelous that we had that kind of support. And I hope that those who, who didn't get elected tonight will make themselves available for some committee assignments, because the, the city does need guys in the trenches that are out there, meeting kind of week to week and month to month to, to guide the direction of the council. I mean, we depend on those, the council depends on those boards for information and guidance. And so, we expect, we expect lots of reports from people and, and then try to take action based upon what we hear. With that said, I, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Does Steven need to give his word?
I'm sorry, did I jump over you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man, where did, where did that? You, you can tell that I am really...
Typically, the way it goes is all the council does it, then me, and then the mayor goes last.
Oh, and I jumped right in over the top of that. Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to put a checkmark. I remember that differently.
I, I just wanted to let the public, I mean, we're, a few of us are going down to WAM. We're leaving tomorrow, and we'll be down there from Wednesday through Friday. And they have some good sessions down there, particularly for the newly-elected. Also, in, in ways of the committees, we have quite a list of committees. We have the airport board. We have the beautification committee. We have planning commission. We have tree board. So, if any of those type of things interest you, please submit a letter of interest. We, we need people to serve on these boards, particularly on the airport board. I think we had three vacancies, and I think we've only had one submit a letter of interest. So, and, and that's an important one in this time of Riverton. The airport board is critical. Last thing is I wanted Mike just to give kind of an update on some of the positive things that are happening in his department.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's getting late, and I'll be very brief, but you know, now that 2014 has come to a close, we really can start to get a pretty good statistical snapshot of, of how the, the year went last year, and how things are going in, in a more of a historical context. And I really want to address this, this alcohol issue that has been plaguing us for so long. You know, over the last five years, our police department takes a little over 2,000 people a year into custody for public intoxication. And that typically, you know, it's gone as high as 2,200 in one year within the last five years. And, and that includes people taken to the detoxification center or jailed just for public intoxication. That number last year was down to 1,100. So, we're about 800 off of our five-year average pace. And I really think that is a, a, you know, a statement of support of all the people in our community that have risen up to try to help solve this problem. And I think it's tangible. I think if you drive around our community, the, the issue is not as visible as it has been in years past. I think that Volunteers of America Northern Rockies has to take a, a big share of the credit for that. Their model is truly having an impact in our community. And I wanted to share that with everybody, because now that we can see a full year snapshot, it, what, what I'm seeing on the street is borne out statistically, and I think that's important. The other statistic I stumbled across that I wanted to share with you is, in the, in the police world, we have to use force to effect arrests. And it's, it's an unfortunate piece of our business, but unfortunately, there are some people who are just not cooperative with us when we try to take them into custody. And we do take a significant number of people into custody for various reasons throughout the year, whether it's, you know, a, a criminal arrest, or whether it's for a mental health problem, or whether it's for a, for a substance abuse issue. And we track the use of force that we have to use. Everything above compliant handcuffing, we track. So, a lot of law enforcement agencies will only track hard uses of force. We track everything that's above someone just basically giving up and putting their hands behind their back. And with that said, we use force in about 3% of our custodial situations, where we have to do what we call combat handcuffing, or someone has to draw a weapon, or threaten the use of a taser, something like that. But if you look at the, the hard use of force, which I would include as a strike, you know, a kick or a punch, the actual deployment of OC spray, a taser probe deployment, a baton strike, that kind of hard force, we don't use very often. But over the last five years, we, we track that separately as well. In 2010, we had to do that 74 times during arrests. In 2011, that was down to 48. The next year, it went down to 41. Two years ago, it was down to 28. And in 2014, we only had to do that 21 times. Now, the total number of arrests are down this year because of our lack of as many custodial situations for intoxicated folks. But we still had to use force about 3% of the time. For our hard use of force number to drop from 78 to 21 is, is a testimony to two things, I think. One is our, our commitment to ongoing training. We've really put the officers through a lot of training, ongoing training. I think that's a critical piece of that. The second thing is that we've been able to hire really good people over the last few years, and that's being borne out in the day-to-day work that they're doing. The fact that we're still arresting about the same amount of people, the fact that we're still having to use force in about the same percentage of circumstances, and for the hard use of draw, of use, the hard use of force, I'm sorry, to drop that significantly, really just shows that the officers are making good choices and, and taking people into custody at a lower level of force when it's necessary. And, and you know, of the people that we have to use force on, about 87% of them were under the influence of alcohol or drugs last year. So, our officers really are, are interacting with people, even when those people are under the influence of something, at a much lower level of force than has been necessary in the past. And I just wanted to pass it on to you, because I think those two things together really paint a picture for me of where our community's changing and in where our police department is, is changing to, to reflect that.
Thank you. That's a great report, Chief. I, I appreciate the efforts that you have put into that on the solutions committee and, and your, your presence at every board meeting for Volunteers of America. And I, I know that your, your efforts out in the community personally have made a huge difference in that. And, and that is, that shows leadership to, to your officers. Thank you for your efforts. Now, let's see, I think I had a motion. I had a motion and a, and a... Maybe we ought to do that over again. I was so wrong. Okay, everybody ready to adjourn? All of us, fairs say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor says adjourn.